We are.
All righty, I hereby called the City Council for the City of Buellton. Our meeting to order for November 12th, 6 o'clock. If I could get Councilman Andrisik to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
Slightly. Place your hand over your heart and follow with me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Two.
Thank you very much, Councilman. If I could get Linda to do roll call, please.
Okay, Councilmember Andrisik.
Here.
Councilmember King. Councilmember Sanchez.
Here.
Vice Mayor Mercado. And Mayor Sierra.
Here, thank you very much. So we do have quorum tonight, and Councilman King is hoping to join us towards the, as we get farther into the meeting tonight. Reordering of the agenda, City Manager Wolf, you had a comment?
Yes, Madam Mayor, we don't have any reordering of the agenda at this time. However, I would like, just for the benefit of the public who may be listening in, to remind anyone out there who would like to make a public comment that their comments can be made via email to the email address, council, C-O-U-N-C-I-L, at cityofbuellton.com. And if that message is sent here, we will receive that, and we will make sure it gets right into the record.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. We move on to public comments. I have not received any to date. We can give it a couple minutes so I can move forward, and if any public comment do come in, I would be more than happy to read that into our agenda, our meeting tonight. So right now, I'm going to close public comment and move on to the consent calendar. We have quite a few tonight. We have the minutes of October 29, 2020, special City Council meeting. Minutes of October 22, 2020, regular City Council meeting. List of claims to be approved and ratified for payment to date for fiscal year 2020, 2021. Resolution number 20-30, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Buellton, California, granting consent to the City of Solvang to renew the Santianas Valley Tourism Business Improvement District, which is the SYV-T bid, and include the City of Buellton in the SYV-T bid. Resolution number 20-29, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Buellton, California, authorizing application for and receipt of local government planning support grant program funds. And the last one is the request for approval of affordable housing agreement for Village Senior Apartments project and release of the existing bond. Does Council have any questions for staff?
Ed, I move for approval of items 1 through 6.
Ready? Is there a second?
Yes, I'll second it.
All righty, Linda, roll call.
Okay, Councilmember Andrisik.
Hi.
Councilmember Sanchez.
Hi.
And Mayor Sierra.
Hi, thank you for joining us, Shelby.
Thank you, Shelby.
Yes, can I just say a couple words?
Please, go ahead.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you very much, Buellton, the City of Buellton, Madam Mayor and City Council. Ed, or Art, thank you very much for your service. I'm sorry you're not here tonight. You're great to work with. I really look forward to working with Elisa as well, and John, and Ed, and Holly, and Mr. King for this next six-year contract. And we really appreciate your support, and how lucky are we all to work in this amazing place, and appreciate your support.
You've done an incredible job with SYV, so thank you.
Thank you all.
We've worked well together.
Thank you, absolutely. Cheers.
You did a great job, thank you. Okay, so we move on to presentations. Do we have any presentations tonight?
No, ma'am, we do not.
Okay, public hearings, we do have one. Agenda item number seven is ordinance number 20-08, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Buellton, California, revising Title 15 and Chapter 15-01 of the Buellton Municipal Code pertaining to stormwater management and discharge control. This is an introduction and first reading. Director Hess.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of City Council. Can everybody hear me okay? Great, thank you. So on September 12th, 2013, the City Council adopted ordinance 13-05, which initially created and added the stormwater ordinance to the City of Buellton's municipal code. So this was completed in part of our requirements by the Regional Water Quality Control Board as part of our Phase 2 general permit to regulate discharge of pollutants. Since the adoption of ordinance 13-05, the city has provided compliance through annual submittals of the ordinance, annual reports, and various portions of the city's stormwater program as requested by the Regional Water Quality Control Board. In July 2020, however, a different division of the Regional Water Quality Control Board has reviewed the ordinance, the seven-year-old ordinance, and determined that the city's ordinance does not provide adequate legal authority to control the pollutant discharges to meet the requirements of the order provided. So in order to mitigate and correct, the city has provided the draft revised ordinance number 20-08, and has revisions throughout the document on various portions of the ordinance, in particular, the construction site requirements. And you'll see ordinance number 20-08 as provided are in red line mode so that you can see the various changes and revisions that were proposed. Staff has had multiple rounds of review of this draft ordinance with the Regional Water Quality Control Board and their enforcement staff, and they've approved this version of the draft. So with their approval that was received at the end of September 2020, the draft ordinance and their approval, along with the timeline for Council to review and adopt this, was provided to the Regional Water Quality Control Board officially as part of our recent annual report and was uploaded into the SMARTS database. So with that, it doesn't change how we've been doing our process. We have to slightly modify some of the language in some of our guidance documents, but at least the ordinance is updated per what the Regional Water Quality Control Board is looking for as far as the teeth that we need to provide proper enforcement. With that, staff is available to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you very much, Rose. First of all, are there any questions of staff regarding this ordinance?
I just had one question. It was regarding the, regarding the storm.
Do you have a question? Councilman Sanchez?
It was just a question about the storm drains. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, just about the storm drain, and then keeping track of the, of any flooding that happens because of the storm drains being blocked, and I've been, and I wanted to just be aware of the, maintaining those inlets in the future. I know that's part of the stormwater thing, but I would, yeah, I would vote to approve this at this time.
Okay, let me, let me open it up for public comment. If there are no other questions from Council, and I have not received any. Linda, do we have any public comment on this ordinance?
No, no public comment on this or otherwise.
Okay.
I'll second John's motion.
Okay, to approve the introduction and first reading of the ordinance 20-08?
Yes.
All righty. Go ahead, Linda.
Okay, Councilmember Sanchez.
Hi.
Councilmember Andrisik.
Hi.
And Mayor Sierra.
Hi, and Rose, I just want to thank you. Looking through it, it was really easy to see the changes that you made, the way it was presented with, with the red and the blue lines. I just really appreciated. Some of it was so minute, the change, and I know it makes all the difference in the world to our Regional Water Control Board, so thank you very much.
No problem. So the item that will come back in December will be a clean version.
Perfect, thank you very much. Councilmember, comments and items? There's only three of us, so shoot. Councilman Sanchez, any comments or items for you?
No, I've just been getting a lot of criticism about our speed bump, and I was hoping to, in the future, make it a speed hump, and hopefully we'll be working towards that goal. That's the only thing I've had a problem with. And I wanted to thank the electorate for the election, and that's appropriate time to thank anybody in the, in the, the vote, you know, the election board for doing a good job. Thank you.
All righty, Councilman Andrisik, any comments or items from you?
Just happy that the FPPC allowed me to slide back into my old term.
Looking forward to working with you for the next two years. Looking forward to it.
Yes, ma'am. So much.
I just wanted to throw a shout out to our Buellton Rotary Club. On October 24th, they cleaned McMurray Road from Highway 246 up to Firestone, which I believe was their end stop. Nine trash bags worth of garbage that they collected, and I appreciate that they take a really active interest in our community. I'm sure City Manager will bring it up later, but November 20th, we have our drive-in movie, The Droods, and our Green Team has put February 13th, the day before Valentine's Day of next year, as our next community cleanup day. What better way to show the city that you love them for Valentine's Day than spending the day before cleaning up our city? So that's all I've got. Okay, do we have any written communications tonight?
No, ma'am, no written communications.
Okay, committee reports? Councilman Sanchez, Councilman Andrisik, any committee reports?
Haven't, nothing has met since my last report. We got two or three of them in one week, and that was, we're having a dry spell right now.
I did have a, a meeting of the Arts and Culture Committee, and it was a very good meeting, and I'll let Kyle follow through on what we've worked on. Thank you.
Okay, for an agenda item later this evening, then?
Yes.
Okay. And the Green Team met today and is looking at different types of, oh, just different ideas, whether we could have a green award at the State of the City Lunch for next year, and then we were trying to figure out if there would be a State of the City Lunch next year. Public Relations Outreach, the Buellton Beautiful Landscape Program. We've had 13 different residences re-landscape their yards, and there's still $13,000 left in the kitty, so tell, tell your neighbors that it is going very, very well, and Buellton's looking even more beautiful than ever, so. Okay, business items. Agenda item number eight, approval of arts and culture project application. This is a rock class project. Mr. Bow.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Honorable Council Members. We may have our applicant, Matt Schick, joining us later, hopefully, but the Arts and Culture Project is a rock class project. The applicant is a California credentialed teacher with 20 years' experience in the field of music education and performance. He currently teaches music at Ballard Elementary School, in addition to teaching private lessons at his Schickville Music Academy on Industrial Way. The purpose of the proposed project is to offer free music instruction to approximately 20 Buellton Middle Schools, middle school students in small groups of four to five students. Each group would have access to guitar, bass, drums, and keyboard, and students would learn basic instrumental techniques, theory, music history, and the physics of sound. Students would receive four one-hour classes per week for 12 weeks, so quite an extensive program. At the end of those 12 weeks, there would be a proposed performance. Hopefully, by this time, it would be started in the, in the new year, they would actually be able to have an in-person performance, but at the very least, a recorded performance that could be given virtually. The complete project application is included as Attachment 1, and then the list of instrument kits to be purchased is Attachment 2. Their request for $7,053 will pay for the direct music instruction, all instruments and accessories. The purchase of four guitar and four bass kits would allow students to check those instruments out so they can practice at home and come the next day to their rehearsal session prepared. The instruments would remain the property of the city and could be used for future music programs. The applicant will be continuing to work closely with the school district to assist in identifying students who would benefit from this free music program. And of course, any unspent funds are required to be returned to the city. Arts and Culture Committee discussed this project at length and recommended approval to the City Council. And with that, I am available to answer any questions you might have, or also Councilman Sanchez, who was there at the Arts and Culture Committee.
Terrific, thank you very much. First of all, Councilman Sanchez, Andrisik, any questions of staff on this one?
Sounds like it's on the right row.
So I just wanted to clarify it myself. The, you're going to take the first 30 students at Hanada, so this is being offered to Hanada students?
Correct.
What if there's homeschool students who are interested in this? Is it just Hanada or any Buellton?
No, it's, it's any Buellton students. I think the, the purpose of working closely with the school district is to have a, a better idea of students who may be, you know, at risk or would really benefit from this, this program, wouldn't be able to afford one-on-one private lessons, so they have a little bit more insight into those. But yeah, homeschoolers, any, any Buellton middle schoolers, so sixth, seventh, and eighth grades, would be eligible for this program.
And we'd be able to reach out to them?
Yes, I mean, we, we have the, our website, we also have the city Facebook and the Rec Center Facebook, as well as the Schickville Academy website. And actually, the, the way that Mr. Schick is proposing to have the, the students identified is they would just sign up to show their interest, and then he would be able to actually have one-on-one kind of mock interviews to really get a sense of if, if they are interested there, or if parents are just saying, "Go try this," and they don't really want to be there, because as, as anyone who's tried to teach people anything, if they're not motivated to be there and want to be there, it's almost impossible. So he really wants to make sure that the kids who are, who are part of this program really want to be there and can, and can really make the most of this instruction.
Wonderful. Four times, four times a week?
Yeah, four times a week for 12 weeks, so it's, it's, it's pretty intensive, but the, the really, the, the frequency is at the heart of being able to learn an instrument, especially for people who have not had any kind of musical instruction.
Would you, do you think Mr. Schick would appreciate us introducing audition as a, as an operative word rather than just to perform? Might make a difference with the children, students.
Sure.
Okay.
No, I think it's a great idea. Any other questions before I ask for public comment? Public comment? I don't have anything, Linda?
Nope, no public comment.
Bringing it back. John, you were gonna say something, I'm sorry.
Oh, I was just gonna say that that's, this is always something that I envisioned in even in the Arts and Culture. I think the first time we started talking about Arts and Culture in town, was, my vision was to have the kids benefit from music and art and all that, and I think it's a good idea, and I, I'll make a motion to, to do the resolution.
Okay, to approve the applications? I will second that. Linda, roll call.
Okay, Councilmember Sanchez.
Hi.
Mayor Sierra.
Hi.
And Councilmember Andrisik.
Hi, thank you, John.
Excellent.
Thank you, and I'm sorry you weren't able to virtually meet Mr. Schick, but he's a very dynamic guy. He also taught for many years at Solvang School in their, their Arts and Music Academy, so you'll, you'll get to see the, the fruits of the kids' labors in the new year.
I'm looking forward to that. That'll be fun, thank you. Okay, moving on to ordinance number 20-07, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Buellton, California, approving a development agreement, 20-DA-01, for the Creekside Village Mixed Use Development Project located at 480 Avenue of Flags, and authorizing execution of the agreement by the City Manager. This is the second reading tonight. Mr. Wolf?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council. As you'll recall, at the last meeting, the City Council took action to approve the the Creekside Village development entitlements. And along with that, held the introduction and first reading of the ordinance, which would authorize the execution of a development agreement. That took place at the last meeting. And so at this meeting, it is appropriate that the City Council consider the second reading of this ordinance to adopt it and authorize the execution. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions the council may have.
Thank you very much. Any questions for City Manager?
Not this time.
Kind of went through this in depth at our last meeting. Do we have any public comment on this, Linda?
No.
All righty, bringing it back to council.
And now, real for approval of the resolution, 20, 2020?
Our ordinance, 20-07?
07, thank you. 20-07 ordinance.
Authorizing execution of agreement by the City Manager. This is the second reading. We have further readings. I'll second that motion. Linda?
Okay, Councilmember Andrisik.
Aye.
Mayor Ciara.
Aye.
And Councilmember Sanchez.
Aye. Thank you.
We move a lot faster with three councilmembers. Do we need five?
Draw straws, we start drawing straws. Three people stay and two go home.
Agenda item number 10, update on the Comprehensive Energy Project by NG Services U.S. Mr. Wolf?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council. If the council will recall, on August 13th of this year, the City Council approved a program development agreement with NG Services U.S. for the purpose of evaluating the potential for a number of different improvements within the city centering around energy savings and conservation. In particular, the installation of photovoltaic panels at a number of different facilities here within the city. The evaluation that was to be carried out as part of the previous agreement has been completed, and there has been a draft scope and proposal prepared by NG in cooperation with or in conjunction with city staff. I will not go through this scope this evening because I'm going to have our representatives from NG do that for us. But I will let the City Council know that following NG's presentation, we don't require any formal action, but we would like just direction from the City Council if you feel it appropriate to return at the next City Council meeting with the agreement that would put the scope of work into place. So with that, I'm going to turn the presentation over to NG Services, and Ashu will take over from here.
Welcome, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Wolf. Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council and staff. My name is Ashu Jain. I'm with NG. Will it be appropriate for me to share my screen?
Yes.
It's set up.
Okay, yes.
I'm gonna share my, the presentation.
There we go.
It's in your agenda packet too, but it's just easier for me to take you through it. I'm gonna minimize this. So again, thanks a lot. Thank you for giving us the time to go through our, you know, our findings. So as the City Manager mentioned three months ago, your council approved an agreement with us, and we've been working very diligently with your city staff, including Ms. Hess and her staff, in developing this proposal. So what it includes, and please, I can't see your pictures, but if you have any questions, please interrupt me. So we were trying to address four main things. You know, critical infrastructure needs, as in replacing your water meters, air conditioning. All these projects are paid out of savings. There's really no, there's only a positive impact on the general fund as well as other funds. This will create, you know, local economic benefit. And also, there are a lot of community benefits in terms of your installing streetlights, which will make the community safer. And also, we have some other elements in the scope that I'll talk about. This is a snapshot of the entire program. You know, we included lighting, HVAC replacements, some COVID-19 mitigation measures, replacing your water meters, solar streetlights on Industrial Way, and some other streetlights conversion to LED, and of course, solar projects. So we are looking at replacing your indoor and outdoor lighting in the buildings in all these locations, City Hall, wastewater treatment plant, planning, library, police station, post office, with LED lamps. And LED lamps are, you know, much better quality lighting. They last a long, long time, you know, easily over 20 years. And they consume half the energy that is being consumed right now by the building lighting. So it leads to, you know, substantial reduction in maintenance costs also, besides energy. There are some decorative streetlights. I think around 11 or 12 decorative streetlights that we'll be replacing, as well as pedestrian lights. And they will be going from, you know, your standard, I think they are metal halide lamps to LED. And again, same benefits, better quality lighting, more directed, and saves a lot in maintenance cost. Solar streetlights. So we are installing 34 streetlights on, or we are proposing to install 34 streetlights along Industrial Way and leading to the entrance of the wastewater treatment plant. If I can quickly show you a picture of that. So it's, so what we are proposing to do is install streetlights all the way here. And then this is the, and all the way to the entrance of the wastewater treatment plant and also along this way. So these are solar streetlights. You don't need any electrical infrastructure. They are backed up by batteries that'll last, you know, seven or eight years. And we have, then we will replace them. So it's completely battery-backed up, doesn't need any infrastructure, and it just runs them solar. And we've done this for City of Madera and many other cities. There are several older air conditioning units. We are replacing eight of these in various buildings, which are outlined here. And these are units that have passed their useful life. And it just makes sense to replace them in a planned way rather than, obviously, air conditioning units tend to break during peak summer. So it's good to replace them, you know, in a planned manner. And we'll install more efficient units, lead to better comfort, and of course, savings in maintenance cost as well as energy cost. All the units of the city, we plan to install these wireless thermostats. What they do, the city staff can actually control the air conditioning from any handheld device or cellphone. And they can schedule any unit they want. For instance, let's say there's a unit for your council chambers, and you want it on on a Saturday. You can just tell your staff, and they don't have to come to the council chambers. They can just, you know, from their, if they have all the passwords, they can, they can just switch the air conditioner on for, you know, whatever number of hours you want. And it also does a lot of diagnosis. And, you know, if you have a problem with the air conditioning, you can actually diagnose issues remotely. So better comfort, faster response to your HVAC problems. And of course, it saves in energy cost because without these, your units are running much longer. Now you can control them very, you know, in a very, you can program for a year in advance. So it's, you know, allows for daylight savings and everything. So it's just a good thing, and it's very inexpensive, actually, now. So this is a measure that, you know, we recently started doing, obviously. And it's basically ionizers. And what, they've been proven that they can, you know, get rid of 99% of the COVID-19 virus. And the way they do it is you have these ionizers, which is, which are in the air conditioning unit. And when the air passes through them, it gets ionized. And when it hits any virus, even on a surface or in the air, it actually combines with that, and it gets caught in the filter. It either falls to the ground because it becomes heavy, or when it comes back in the return air, it gets caught in the filter because now it's a bigger, it's a heavier element. So that's how it's shown that, you know, you can get rid of 99% of your COVID-19 virus. And it's totally maintenance-free and doesn't consume much electricity at all. A big part of this project is sort of replacing out your water meters. The city has already replaced around one-third of their water meters and have gone with this census water meters, which can be read much easier. So right now, somebody has to, for these meters, you have 1,500 meters which are manual, which means somebody has to go and physically open the lid and read them. With this system, you can read the entire city of Buellton water meters in probably two to three hours. You just drive through the street, and all the meter data gets downloaded. So it leads to, of course, it pretty much lowers the cost of meter reading a lot, you know. And also, you can, you are now, I think you might be billing bi-monthly. Now you can bill monthly. And it also has ways to do leak detection and figure out if there's been any tampering or reverse flow. And so it's really, it's really very beneficial. And again, this is a process that has already been started. We're just completing the rest of it. I don't know if there's any question on that. For the solar project, we looked at all your sites, and we are recommending three solar projects. And these are your biggest users. The booster pump at McMurray Road, and that's a ground-mount system. So it just sits on the ground, and it'll avoid the electricity that's being consumed by this pump. At the library and the post office, we have, there's also a water well here, pump. So we are going to be connecting the solar projects to the, to avoid the electricity used at that pump. There's some vehicles that come to service the pump, so we couldn't extend this canopy all the way through. We had to leave some space here. That's why we had to reduce the size. And these are tall. These are 14 feet high so that normal vehicles, you know, heavy vehicles can pass underneath. This is the wastewater treatment plant. That's the biggest, you know, solar project here. Again, these are 14 feet high, canopies. You can park, staff can park cars underneath or heavy equipment. So these are basically parking canopies, and it provides shade for the vehicles and of course, energy for the wastewater treatment plant. So that was the scope of work. You know, NG as a company, you know, we're a, we're a large company, international company. And one of the things we always try to do is we have our own social budget, and we like to have an impact on the local community besides just the project. So for every project that we do, you know, we make a contribution to a nonprofit. And, you know, the City Council can direct where that money goes, and we make a fixed contribution of $25,000 that comes out of our social budget. And, you know, for City of Fireball, for instance, we made a contribution, we, for Police Activity League. I think we funded it for three years. For City of Madera, we did a scholarship for 10 high school students in the summer to come and work at City Hall and other facilities. Similarly, for City of Gustine, City of Madera, you know, we made a, made a contribution to a nonprofit. We can fund summer park programs. We can fund things like Christmas events. So it all depends on, you know, what the council and staff would like to use that. But that's our way of giving back to the community. So the next slide is all about, you know, how it's going to be all funded. But before I get into that, are there any question, questions on the, on the scope, scope of work that I just presented?
Councilman, any questions for Mr. Jean?
No, ma'am. Big thank you.
Councilman Sanchez, any questions so far? I had one question, sir. You said that, and this is very important for our community, that this would help create jobs. Do you hire locally? Or how, how, how does this create jobs?
Well, two, a couple of ways. So, you know, there are, there's certain work that we can do locally. Like, there's some landscaping work that we use. We use, you know, we do fencing. We have air conditioning units that be replaced. There are local contractors, you know, and we haven't, you know, we haven't finalized any, you know, purchase orders or anything like that because we, you know, obviously, we have to get the award, do the final engineering, and then we will. But so that's one way we can look for. We do a pretty good job of reaching out to the local Chamber of Commerce. And, you know, so we, so that's one way that we have a direct impact. The other is, you know, this project's gonna take, I think, nine months to do. The other economic stimulus is, we're gonna be coming, we're gonna be occupying hotels there. We're gonna be, you know, you know, spending money, buying stuff locally. So that's another way of economic stimulus. So that's, that's the way we do it.
I appreciate that. Thank you very much, sir. Thank you. Okay, I don't hear any other questions, so why don't you, you continue?
Okay, so let me take you through the cash flow. So this project cost is 4.3 million. And I'm happy to report that since the last 10 days, we've been working very hard to negotiate with our suppliers and all that. And I have a revised cash flow, but I don't want to confuse you. But we've reduced, we've been able to reduce it by over $100,000. So if your council chooses to move forward with it and consider it in the next council meeting, our price will be close to 4.2 million, 4.21 million. The city has $400,000 for various parts of this project, the water meters, the streetlights. So they'll contribute $400,000. And, you know, the city will finance 3.9 million over a period of 20 years. Now, we, on City's behalf, last week, we went, reached out to the, we did an RSP for financing. And I'm really happy to report that we were able to get a finance rate, which is locked until December 31st, of 2.45% at 20 years. That's one of the lowest rates I've seen. So it's a testament to your credit rating and that, you know, you got such an attractive rate. There were four proposals turned in, which I've sent to the City Manager. But the lowest rate you got was better than the 2.7. It was 2.4, 2.45%. So that's, that's great news. We have some assumptions, which are pretty conservative, on electricity cost escalation, water cost of 3%, electricity cost of 5%. And in the first year, you know, the, your electricity cost is going down, but you'll save $130,000. You'll have increased revenue on the water side because these meters, two-thirds of the meters, they're gonna be reading more accurately. So you'll be actually billing exactly. So you'll be actually billing exactly, you know, what you'll be, what residents are consuming. Older meters tend to run slower, so, so we've assumed, you know, at a minimum, you know, a 5% increase and that's what's even assumed here. Meter reading costs, as you mentioned, there will not be, you know, your people, they're spending close to a half man year in reading meters and that will be avoided. So, and, and when you, and that doesn't mean that you're, you know, that the labor savings that you'll see, that you're going to let any employee go. But what happens is, is that you can take, you know, those people who are reading meters currently, they'll be able to do other parts, they'll be able to do other work, which the city is currently contracting out. So that's how there, there are these savings. And we've discussed all this with staff, of course. O M savings, these are savings in, because you are replacing all your lighting and your air conditioning. According to the California Energy Commission, there's guidelines on how much that will save on your repair costs. The city elected to use half of that estimate to be conservative. So, so we are, this is half of what California Energy Commission recommends. We completely maintain the solar project for you, all the solar projects. We do the cleaning and we do all the electrical maintenance. I've factored in, you know, the battery, the batteries will last approximately seven years conservatively, they'll actually last more, but, you know, it's, I've, what I've included is if you have to replace them after year seven and year 14. So, so this is a complete cash flow. It identifies all the costs that you'll have on the project and all the savings. One more thing I'd like to point out, the, we have extended the savings to the life of the project. That means only the solar project has a 30-year life. Everything else that we have submitted, proposed to you, the air conditioning, the lighting, the streetlights, streetlights will actually last more, but we've conservatively said they'll last only 20 years, so you'll see that. We are not extending the savings up to 20 years. So all in all, your savings after paying for all the costs, including the lease payments, you're saving 71,000. Actually, in the revised cash flow that you'll see next time, it's more like $75,000 because of the reduced price, the better interest rate and all that. And you're saving 4.2 millions over the life of the project. So it's an extremely attractive project. It achieves, you know, your infrastructure improvements and it saves you money. So you're saving 4.2 million, you're saving electricity cost, which means, you know, you're not impacted so much by PG&E's rising electricity cost. Oh yes, we guarantee 90% of the savings. So if the savings are any less for the next 20 years, we'll write you a check for the difference and we monitor those every year. So those are some of the big benefits of this project. Of course, it reduces carbon emissions and that's equivalent for this project, equivalent to removing 117 cars of the road. The final slide I have here, you know, we are at the study session today. If council is okay, we have submitted a contract, we will submit a contract by early next week for, you know, city manager and city, city staff and city attorney review. And, you know, maybe hopefully, if you're okay, come back on December 10th for consideration of approval of the project. And then it'll, we'll start the project in January and it should take us less than a year. We are, we are comfortable in, you know, one year installation. So be happy to take questions that might have gone through this too quickly, maybe.
It sounds wonderful to me. Let me ask council members. Councilman Sanchez, any questions?
Yeah, I just had, I was, a couple of things. The wastewater treatment plant is really dusty. I just wondered if that'd be something that we'd have to clean the panels more often because there's gonna, it's just because of the conditions down there, where they're gonna put them. And would that be something that we can do for?
Well, we are, we are planning on doing that. So that's included in the, in the, this solar maintenance cost. It includes cleaning the solar panels and we are guaranteeing you a certain amount of savings. We monitor around 1,000 projects from our office in Overland Park. And if we see that the solar project is producing any less, we will come and clean it as many times as you want, as it needs. We have a lot of projects in, in the, in the Central Valley where there's a lot of farming. So we're very used to, you know, keeping the projects, keeping the panels as clean as they need to be to maintain our production. And, you know, I don't know if you remember last time, we, we have done these projects up and down the coast. We've completed this project for, you know, solar projects for Santa Maria Union High School District. We just completed City of Pismo Beach six months ago and did a project for City of Lampok. We were just selected by Santa Barbara Unified School District for 14 sites. So anyway, so we have a tremendous amount of experience and with, with solar projects.
Another question is, if we just had a spot in town, we wanted to add a light, do you have like a set price? Say if we wanted to add a couple of lights on Central Avenue needs lights. And I know that's not part of this project, but it could be. Or if it's something that we wanted to add, find a place where we needed a light, is that something that you just have a per-light package price to add?
We can, we can definitely add it to the contract. We can add it to the contract per-unit price if you think you'll add a few more lights or if you are sure that you would like to do that. If staff can direct us in the next, you know, week or so, we can even put it in the contract or, or we can have a unit rate in the contract and we can do it as a change order.
Okay, I just, I'd just like to have that flexibility because I, I promised lights on Central Avenue a long time ago. But, and if, and if there's a place that needs it, I think it's appropriate of, we have a spot that we'd like to add, anywhere in town, something that we do, it could have, it could be in, in short order. I appreciate that.
We can do that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Andrisik, questions?
It really sounds too good to be true. So I'm hopeful that you, you survive the 20 years. That's, that's wonderful. It's just, we've, we've talked about it in generalities, but we never had a pinpoint place to go to reach people. You know, it's always been the big contractors and it's 12, 15 million dollars for a third of which you're tackling. I commend you for, and appreciate you coming to Buellton to alert us or make us aware of this. I was not aware this existed.
Thank you. It was a, we, we met Mr. Wolf at, at an event in January and I sat with him next to the breakfast table, so that's how it all came along.
I'm, I'm, I'm so glad you did.
Yeah.
So glad you did. Thank you, Councilman Andrisik. I guess, Linda, do we have any public comment on this?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Yeah, I, I am, I'm really excited.
I, I have to say, I, I think-
We can greener, we can immunity more stable and it's funny.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
We were talking, John was just discussing, Councilmember Sanchez was talking about the per-unit cost and, you know, we were, we've been beating our head against the wall up and down the avenue, trying to get people to upgrade and bring their projects into, into the realm of desirability instead of just existence for, for the city. And I think if we're, if we were able to see a per-unit cost, I think we could really get some of the property owners to let go of their, their checkbooks, to, to upgrade their property at a very competitive cost from what I'm hearing tonight.
Go ahead, Mr. Wolf.
I, I was just gonna indicate to Councilmember Andrisik, the, the program that's going on right here is offered by NG through some legislation at the state level. It's only available to public agencies at this point, so we would not really be able to go and offer these, these costs to, to private property owners.
Okay. Well, maybe-
We'll look into some other opportunities there, though.
Well, and how, how lucky are we that the state of California, that this is important to them so that cities have the opportunity to deal with companies like NG?
Right, thank you.
Councilman? Any more discussion or, or do we want to give direction on this item to our city manager?
John? I would vote to approve going forward this project.
Okay, so the direction is to return with an agreement to bring the scope of work back to council on December 10th?
Yes. And is that possible to have a per-unit cost? Would it be too early to, for the council to maybe increase our participation?
We will look into the, the needs for additional street lighting at Central Avenue and see if that's not something we can work into the contract before it comes back on December 10th. Beyond that, I, I'll work with NG to see if we can't pick up some unit cost pricing for any change orders subsequent to that.
Thank you, Mr. Wolf.
Wonderful. Linda, roll call?
Don't even need it if you don't-
I'm sorry, there's no motion, that's it, just direction.
That was just direction. Sorry about that. Thank you very much, city attorney.
Thank you so much. Thanks for that.
Thank you very much, sir. Appreciate it. Thank you. Okay, then we move on to agenda item number 11, consideration of funding allocation for repair of the HVAC at Thompson's Cypress Gymnasium at Honoda Middle School. Mr. Wolf?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the city council. For the last several years, the gymnasium at Honoda Middle School has had a non-functional HVAC unit within it. Effectively removed the ability to circulate or cool or heat the air within the building. The gymnasium is part of an area which is covered by the Joint Use Facilities Agreement between the school district and the city. The gymnasium is, is one of those facilities that is jointly used between the two. And as such, maintenance costs are generally shared between the district and the city. In order to fix this HVAC unit that's, that's gone bad, a number of steps have been taken trying to do this as cost efficiently as, as possible. However, all attempts up to now have been thwarted by the fact that there is a proprietary control system in use as well as a CO2 sensor which is inside the system. And between those two items, we've been unable to find, we being the, the city and the school district have been unable to find a contractor who's willing to work on that. Therefore, the district has had to go back to the manufacturer, the owner of the, the company that manufactured the system, who referred them back to the contractor that originally installed it. And that contractor has provided a quote for service to repair the HVAC unit. The unit itself, or the, excuse me, the quote for repair of the unit itself is in the amount of $8,253. The item was discussed at the last Joint Use Committee, excuse me, Joint, Joint Use Facilities Committee, which is made up of members of both the city and the school district staff as well as elected officials from the school district and the city. And the intent was to bring this item to the council to determine the city's willingness to essentially cover half the cost of the repairs of this particular unit. That amount for half the cost would be $4,126.50. At this point, staff is asking for direction from the council and if this be the desire of the council to approve an expenditure in the amount of $4,126.50 toward the repair of the HVAC system at Honoda Middle School. I'm happy to answer any questions. Mr. Abello is here also, who's got considerably more history than I do on the matter. And we have, Mayor Sierra was involved in the meeting with the school district here recently. And hopefully between the three of us, we can answer any questions that you may have.
Councilman, any questions?
Just wondering, just wondering if, how this, how this looks for, from the legal situation because of our, the extent of, or the lack of our proprietary ownership, but yet we're involved in, with the, with the ongoing maintenance. Is there gonna, would this, would it be appropriate to facilitate a, an agreement, maybe talking about what, what future maintenance we could expect to have from the? It really just seems like a couple of years ago when we had the shovel breaking right outside the, the chambers here for the, for the Cypress Gymnasium. And it's, it's served the community well, but now we're getting into the repair and replacement mode. So I'm, I'm wondering if it wouldn't be prudent to, for example, the committee, you know, the committee that John's bringing, bringing to us all the time for events and arts and, arts and culture. Well, I think this would be facilities, maintenance and longevity for the, for the future of Buellton.
Kyle?
Yeah, Councilman Andrisik, the, the Joint Use Committee actually, as part of the joint use agreement between the school district and the city, is created for just such a purpose to discuss these ongoing maintenance repair issues on a, on a case-by-case basis. And so I, I think the agreement, the current, the current agreement has, has language that discusses even the, the ownership of the property is the district, but because we share use of it, that's when we, we get together at the joint use level and discuss where we think the, you know, the repairs or what kind of repairs that, that we might recommend to the council and the school board. So that's kind of a, a kind of a technical committee to kind of discuss some of those things before it gets to either the, the council or the board to, to make those funding decisions.
Very effective. I appreciate that.
Kyle, don't we take a percentage of fees that we do and put them into the maintenance?
We do. Yes, as, as part of a line item in the budget each year, we, we set aside one-third of all of the rental fees for Room A and the gymnasium. And that goes into the next year's joint use, maintenance and repair budget. And so, for instance, as, as Art usually, or whoever the representative to the Joint Use Committee reports, there's a tree trimming that's going to be coming up for those stone pines in the rec center parking lot. And so our regular joint use, maintenance and repair budget has funds enough to cover that cost. This HVAC system at the gymnasium is really over and above our, our regularly budgeted amount. So that's why it's here for your consideration.
Thank you for the explanation because we will hear from the public when this, you know, when they, they say you, you did what, you know, how much, how can you justify spending that much money? And I think this gives us as a council a defense for pre-planning, good management, longevity, make them want to live here even longer. Thank you.
Absolutely. Councilman Sanchez, any questions on this one?
Yeah, I would like this to have been done yesterday because, and as far as this goes, I'm just wondering, when is the next, do we have to wait for next meeting to approve this or if we approve this, can it be done tomorrow? Or is there another step involved in this?
What would happen is the, if the city council were to approve the expenditure, the, the funding would become available immediately. We would then work with the district to get their contractor in to do the repairs and, We would then work with the district to get their contractor in to do the repairs, and, you know, with our funding in hand, one would hope that it would be happening fairly quickly.
As soon as possible, yeah. Linda, do we have any public comment on this item?
We do not.
All righty, I bring it back to council for consideration.
I would move for the considerate, for the expenditure contribution of the amount of $41,2650 toward the repair of the Thompson Cypress Gymnasium HVAC system ASAP.
I would second that and approve the full amount if it would go faster.
The motion was for $41,2650, and you're good with that one? You're seconding that one, John?
Yeah, I'll second that, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Linda, roll call?
Okay, Councilmember Andrisik.
Hi.
Councilmember Sanchez.
Hi.
And Mayor Sierra.
Hi, thank you very much, appreciate it. This has been something that's been needed to get done for a long time.
Thank you, Kyle, for
Get it done.
Holding it together.
Well, and hopefully we'll be able to encourage the district to get that contractor in there, so we can open up the gymnasium to the community again. It's, there's a lot of people asking me every week, can we play basketball yet? Can we play pickleball yet?
We'll call them tomorrow.
We'll contact the district tomorrow, yes.
Thank you.
For safety reasons, they've been unable to open it with this repair. Okay, moving on, agenda item number 12. Mr. King isn't with us yet?
He is not.
Okay, we're moving, we're moving fast tonight. Thanks, Kyle. Discussion regarding flagpole on median two. Here we go again. Director Hess?
Actually, this one will be me as well this evening.
Ah, okay, okay.
So, Madam Mayor, members of the city council, you're well familiar with this particular issue, which had to do with the removal of a flagpole, one of the original flagpoles on Avenue of Flags, this one located on median two. There has been a considerable amount of work done by staff trying to determine various ways in which this flagpole could be removed, with the preferred option being the reconstruction and replacement of the original pole that was removed from median two as part of the construction project back last year. There are essentially three options which were reviewed. One option was that, to reconstruct the original pole. That's shown in your staff report as alternative two. Alternative number one is actually to relocate an existing flagpole in the same design created by the same blacksmith that originally created the other poles, from a location where it sits currently on Industrial Way to median two. There are some costs associated, engineering and otherwise, with the pursuit of this particular alternative, alternative number one. The costs associated with that are estimated to total around $33,000. Alternative two, which is the reconstruction of the original pole, while it can be done, it is really infeasible. It's not something that staff has been able to find, a structural engineer who will certify, and without that certification, the city's liability would really exceed anything that I would be comfortable with, and our city attorney, I know agrees with that, because he told me he was uncomfortable with it. So, we've marked that within the staff report as an infeasible alternative. The third alternative is to, is to simply purchase a new, a new flagpole, one which has a similar appearance to the original flagpole, design a base for that one. Because we're dealing with a newly manufactured pole with specifications that can be easily verified, the cost on that one is considerably less expensive, coming in at $16,800. In addition to costs associated with alternative one, with the construction and installation, there's another small cost that would be incurred, because we would be required to replace the flagpole that we'd be removing from Industrial Way, although the owners of the property have indicated that a smaller flagpole could be used to replace the 50-foot one which would be removed, and that one would not require the, likely not require the design and installation of a new footing, because we're dealing with a smaller than 50-foot pole. So with that in mind, the city council has the alternatives in front of them. Our engineering staff is available to answer any technical questions that come up, and staff is looking for direction this evening as to which, if any, alternative should be considered for the replacement of the flagpole on median two.
Thank you. Councilman Andrisik, question? Yes, please.
Scott, you mentioned, you have a price, you had a price of 30, what was the 30-something thousand, and that wasn't, I don't think that had the, what were your comparisons? I have $16,800 for
For alternative three.
Alternative three.
And then alternative one is $33,000 for the installation and engineering for the flagpole, and then an additional $5,000 approximately to replace the flagpole on Industrial Way that would be removed.
So it's 38, the decision for me, it's comparing a $38,000 investment to a 16-8 investment.
Right, that's correct.
Okay, I think that helps me make up my mind, but I, it's a huge, huge difference. I don't understand why we would even have to think about it, but I'm prepared to accept the cost of the recommendation three.
To answer your question, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
To answer your question very briefly, councilmember, the original intended replacement for the flagpole that was specked within the project was a, was an aluminum flagpole of a different design, and it would have resulted in a much lower cost even than alternative number three. However, the city council felt it appropriate at the time to consider these alternatives in order to respect the history that that flagpole represents along the avenue, and the significance, it's more of a heritage decision to benefit the city as a whole, as opposed to a monetary decision. Nevertheless, the city council can feel free to decide whatever they will on this particular project. There is a wide variety of costs. The two costs that are in front of you are really the two viable alternatives this evening.
Thank you.
So I have, I have a question, and I'm sure Councilman Sanchez does too, but I just, we're looking at two options, one is more than twice the expense of the other. The historical, the historical importance of this flagpole is part of our community. I'm just wondering if it would be possible, if council decided to go with the less expensive option, if something could be done with the flagpole that was originally there that's been cut into three pieces? If there's something that can be salvaged from that to put on the avenue as a historical marker of the artisan, the ironmaker, I'm just wondering if that's a possibility?
I think a historical rock commemorating the achievements of Mr. Klebo and his performance years, years gone by, they've held, they've weathered the storm of life expectancy, I'm sure, and I think a nice, a nice plaque would allow people to read about the history of the Avenue of Flags. I think the historical society may be able to come up with something that just really puts another feather in Beelton's cap for the people walking up and down the avenue, because at least we still have a walking path there. I don't, I haven't seen any changes in that. It would be nice to
Councilman Sanchez?
I got two, two different questions. One, do the law office, the liability of a pole, what is the liability of a breaking pole, a falling pole? What is, what is that?
So there are essentially two aspects of the liability. One, as you note, is just the ability to repair it to the extent that our insurers and legal staff feel comfortable that it's not going to fall. The second, and I think much larger problem, comes with the winds. And when you repair a pole of that age and that size, the wind aspect of it and the chance that it will fall in winds, whether it shears off at the weld point that's used to repair it, or whether it falls from the base, the risk is too high. When a pole's certified, it can be insured, the risk can be insured. With it not being able to be certified by the engineers, all of the risk falls on the city, none can be passed through to JPIA, because it simply won't be insured. That's the risk that I saw, I know that's the same risk that the city manager saw, and that's why we cannot recommend that option. Ultimately, if the city council chooses to go with that option, we can make that happen. But before we did that, we would want to come back with a much more thorough written analysis of the risk for all of you. But we're happy to take the direction that the council gives. As the mayor said, this is as much a heritage decision as it is a financial decision, and so, you know, I will take direction.
And before you ask your second question, Mr. Sanchez, I'd like to welcome Councilman King to the meeting.
Dave?
Go ahead, John, your second question?
Well, the question is, I guess the engineer has a problem with the integrity of the flagpole, but it was already welded, and it's already been in pieces and welded together for 50 years, and I don't understand how another pole welded as strong or stronger than the original welds would be less strong, and it will not break, it's steel, it's not going to crumble. And the only, the only bearing part of any threat of it falling would be the bolts holding the base. And if the foundation holds, that's holding on seven flagpoles with the same wind for 50 years, where do we, where do we come up with it's not strong enough to withstand the wind today? And to me, it could only be stronger, we'd have a new base, new bolts, and that's what I'd like to get it, I'd like to have the original pole to be put up there. If it's repaired, it's repaired, so it's welded, you weld, you weld the shuttle, I talked to a welder who worked at the shuttle project and was welding for the space. A weld's a weld, and steel's steel. I don't understand why you think that, or who could think that it's going to be weaker if it's repaired correctly? I guess that's for you, Jason.
Hi, Councilmember Sanchez, I'll actually introduce Mike Olson, who's with Tetra Tech, and he practices structural engineering on a day-to-day basis, and did a fair amount of research, and also reached out to the county of Santa Barbara to determine what kind of building and safety type approval they would, they would require, and got their opinions. But Mike, how about if you can give a little background of the research you've found, and the governing codes that we're designing to nowadays versus what was done many years ago?
Yeah, sure, can. So again, I'm Mike Olson, I'm a structural engineer over here at Tetra Tech. So, we do a lot of retrofit structures, buildings, odds and ends. So really, in a situation like this, we default to the California Existing Building Code, and there's particular information in there when it comes to how, when structures are damaged, when are they subjected to having to be reviewed under current loading conditions, current code guidelines and standards, and when they're not. So in this particular case, this would probably fall into substantial damage since it was essentially broken down into three pieces. I talked to senior structural engineer staff, who have about 30 or 40 years of experience as well, and they kind of came to the same conclusion that due to the amount of damage the structure has taken on, it would be subject to current building code loading standards. And there's been some significant updates to the seismic and wind loads, even in the last 15 to 20 years, that we've done several, again, we've done several retrofit structures. And due to the increased loading conditions, we feel that's unlikely that we could show that the pole, the existing pole would meet the current loading standards. So that's kind of the first part. Now, there is some other language in the code saying if you restore it to its original condition, then it may be able to, you may be able to bypass and omit having to subject that current flagpole in this, in this state to the current loading conditions. So we reached out to the Santa Barbara Building and Safety Department, and we also reached out to the Department of Transportation, as we weren't sure which jurisdiction would be reviewing this, if any, and both of them were very hesitant to give us any sort of guidance, other than, other than the engineer would be taking on incredible liability, and depending on who is reviewing this, it could go either way. So that's kind of what our analysis, our preliminary analysis was for trying to restore the existing flagpole. So it has, it really just boils down to, you know, it has undergone substantial damage. The code reads as, hey, you're now going to have to subject this 40, 50-year-old pole to current loading standards, and we've had, we've had to do this with structures before, and I've even, you know, I've talked to Jason a few times where we've had to retrofit structures, and the current code is basically telling us that the structure should be crumbling before our eyes, but it really isn't, it's just subject to newer, higher loading conditions. So that's kind of where we're at with trying to restore the current flagpole.
On the alternative three, you would rebuild the flagpole, the same five welds, and be the same flagpole, but be a brand-new steel, and look the same, is that what the alternative three is?
Alternative three, I think, is where we would just be installing a new manufactured pole. So alternative one was basically the one we talked about, the infeasibility, and then alternative one is taking the pole at industrial and moving it over to median number two. So that one's, that one's interesting, because what we would be doing is basically probably saw cutting the bottom of that pole, and basically welding on a new base plate, and attaching it to a new foundation. And that's where we've done that a few times, I actually did that with a large Stater Brother sign down in the city of Anaheim about two years ago. They had to move it for some construction purposes and then reinstall it. Since we're modifying the connection and not the main superstructure with the building department down there, we were able to basically claim, hey, we're not damaging the superstructure, which was the sign and the pole itself, we're modifying the connection, but that connection was designed per the current loading standards, and we were able to modify the base plate there and the anchorage into the new foundation, because we weren't changing the load path or damaging the superstructure. So that's how we kind of, kind of justified to the building safety department down in the city of Anaheim, and I think that would be the approach with moving the pole on industrial over to median number two, if that, if that makes sense.
So you'd take the pole that, and you'd cut the bottom off, and then reweld the bottom?
Right. With a new base plate, with some, with a new base plate.
And then involving two pieces of pipe together?
Yeah, it would probably be some sort of square or circular base plate with Yeah, it would probably be some sort of square or circular base plate with an anchorage arrangement that would be bolted down into a new foundation. But that connection, that connection at the bottom of the pole, we would be designing per the new loading standards, current loading standards of the code.
So if we went to alternative two and put the old pole up, you would have to do the same thing, is cut it again?
We we would have to verify, we would have to verify that the strength of the pole, since it has been substantially damaged at these locations, has adequate flexural strength per the code. Knowing how the the wind load, the wind load increases over the past 20 or 30 years, there's a high likelihood that the section modulus of, the section of that pole is probably not adequate, potentially could not be adequate. And we've kind of ran into this even with like traffic signal lights. Even going around town, we've seen them actually enlarge quite a bit over the last five or 10 years. So it really has to do with the current loading requirements.
But you're talking about an alternative three, you're just going to get a different pole, whatever pole you find, the 50-foot pole, which is what we did in the first place.
Right.
This is the original.
Right, and that's spec to current code level, and then basically, you know, you you order it, it gets fabricated, sent to the site, and pour new foundation and bolt it in. It's it's pretty straightforward.
Well, a little bit more detail, though, just to interject. We would be trying to look to fabricate a pole that would look similar to what's existing out there. That would be the direction for alternative three. So wouldn't it be?
We would build a pole the same with the, we would put, we would weld pipe together to build a pole instead of using the pole we own?
Yeah, it would be, it'd be new material. Not existing material.
And wasn't there a section of that getting certified, the metal and the and all the the geol, the geological or the metal inspector and getting the the integrity of the pole checked? Was that, that was something we were going to do?
And that's.
Put it back together?
That's included in the cost for alternative one to review some of the the existing materials. But that is not required for alternative three because you'd be designing and fabricating a brand-new pole.
Right, so the alternative one, you'd cut a good pole up to do the same thing, but to get a new pole. If it was built the same way, it's only 16,800. But to use the old pole, we have to cut it apart and rebuild it?
Yes, because there's there's more engineering that has to be done for that modified connection. We also have to get a materials, a subconsultant out to the site to verify material type and strength. So there's, because there's no as-built drawings, so it's unknown. So if we go out there and assume it's aluminum pole, and it's not aluminum pole, and we make a steel base plate and call it the wrong well, then there's a structural integrity issue there. So we have to verify what the material is. So that's why there's, there's additional cost to that. And what we would probably do is, what we would probably do is have the subconsultant, the material subconsultant, go out to the site and do non-destructive testing to begin with. We would do a condition assessment, and the material subconsultant would come back with basically what they think the material is made up of, the strength of it, if there's any missing information that they have to do with destructive testing. What we would do at that point is run a preliminary analysis based on the information we have to verify that that pole on industrial way would be able to be modified at the at the base with the new base plate so it could be moved to the new site. The second step would be to potentially do destructive testing to completely verify any of the parameters that the material subconsultant may not have been able to confirm doing the non-destructive testing. We'd want to do the non-destructive testing before the destructive because we want to verify, hey, this would work. And so that's kind of where the additional cost comes in. And we reached out to three different material subconsultants, and it ranged anywhere between $25,000 to $3,000 per site visit and for the lab testing that they have to perform.
So it's $28,800 to check the pole and then 24? I just don't, don't get the $28,000 you have to, even if we use the old pole, you want to cut it up and and rebuild it anyway?
So in alternative one, we have a structural engineering design fee of $12,000. That would include a site visit to do the condition assessment and be include preliminary design prior to a second round of material testing if needed, and also final design. That also includes verifying and designing the new flagpole that's going to be replaced at industrial way as well. The geotechnical investigation and foundation recommendations. So there is an existing geotech report. I tried reaching out to the geotech about a week and a half ago. We have basically a fee of $7,000 in there, and there is a pretty substantial geotechnical report. There's just not a recommendation for a flagpole foundation, which would probably be a pole footing. If we're able to reach out to the geotech, and if there's enough information that they have at the site, which I suspect, they may be able just to certify and provide a, basically a foundation recommendation letter, and that fee could drop down quite a bit, I would imagine to even probably a few thousand dollars. We just don't have any confirmation at that point. So we have that $7,000 in there right now. But if we were to take that out, the material testing and the structural engineering design fee would be somewhere around $17,000. And then the installation services, you have to have a structural welder out there with a special inspector. You would have a geotechnical inspection for the foundation, and we're estimating that to be anywhere around $3,000 to $4,000 during construction. So that that puts us at about $27,500 with the geotechnical, without the geotechnical, probably in the low $20,000 range. We also put a 20,000, 20% contingency in there for unknowns, but this would probably be the very upper bound of what the the fees would be.
Can we get a second bit on that? I'd like, I'd like to just, I don't understand the the engineering involved to to put a flagpole up. And the and the geotechnical, is that to dig the hole and put in the bolts? Is that what they call geotechnical?
Right, so they're the soils engineer. So if they have to do an additional investigation to provide a recommendation, that's where the $7,000 comes in.
So to put it, if you were going to put a 50-foot signal in and 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 dig a hole and put the bolts in to put, you're telling me that, you know, they have the the traffic signals hang over the freeway suspended, and they sit in a piece of concrete with four bolts in it, and it's $7,000 or $25,000 for that? Is that, is that a normal cost for engineering to put a footing in?
Well, there's, there's a few factors going into here. We're actually modifying the existing flagpole industrial way. There's also some material testing and a site condition assessment that we have to make on the the current flagpole. In a traffic signal, what you're basically doing is you are specing out and purchasing a, a, a new traffic signal light that has been designed for the current code. So on the engineering side for, like myself, we would be designing the foundation at that point. It depends, it depends on how large the project is. A geotechnical investigation can be $10,000 to $20,000. Now, if you forego a geotechnical investigation for, let's say, that particular project that or scenario that you mentioned, what happens is you have to default to basically the worst soil conditions in the California Building Code. So what ends up happening there is you have to decide, what ends up happening is basically your foundation gets larger because you have lower, basically resisting values that you can use. And what ends up happening on a few projects is if it's small enough, then that enlarged footing gets just tacked, tacked on during the construction phase, and the design phase cost drops down. In this case, for a 50-foot flagpole, you could be saving a few thousand dollars, let's say $7,000, but you might be adding $4,000 or $5,000 to the foundation. You might be increasing the depth of that footing by four or five feet, maybe even more for a 50-foot flagpole. So if you omit a geotechnical investigation for like this situation, you might save $7,000, but that $7,000 might be put into the foundation during construction. But since we haven't ran any numbers at this point, we don't know what the breakpoint is. So.
I have a question for Rose.
Okay.
Are you in there?
Yep.
On the, on the original, on the original parking lot plan, we had a flagpole planned, and it was in the plans to put the pole up and put in a foundation. Do you have any idea what it cost originally before we didn't put in there?
The, the cost for the installation of the flagpole?
Yeah, and the foundation with this, now we have a technical.
The line item, the bid line item for the construction project was, I believe, $11,000 to $12,000, somewhere in in that price range. And that's, the new pole was a lightweight aluminum pole. So it's a different material altogether.
Okay. So we just need more concrete for this other one? Then you have to have the engineers calculate the heavier pole?
Correct.
For $28,000, $7,000 more. I would, I'd like to see the same, the the original pole put in there and what it would take, and if there's a way that we could take the liability away from or accept the liability. It just doesn't, it doesn't make any sense to me, the extended, the inflation and the the doubling of the price. It doesn't make any sense to me.
Before, if you're done with questions, then Dave, did you have any questions on this item?
Yeah.
Councilman King, any questions?
Yeah, can you hear me, Mayor? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, well, I, I guess I do have a question. This, the engineering costs and all that, alternate one versus alternate three, I mean, basically, we're going to rebuild a pole that basically is exactly, or at least as close as we can get it to the original one. But all these engineering costs is because we're going to have to factor in it being tested, make sure it's not rusted out, yabba-dabba-dabba-dab. Is that, is that the way I'm reading this? I guess I can go to somebody in Tetra Tech.
Yeah, so a-again, that's where, basically, you know, you're retrofitting an existing structure. And typically with these poles, you, you know, you, you order, you fabricate because they're designed, the new poles are designed for the current loading standards. In this case, there is basically retrofit that you have to use at the bottom of the pole that we are suggesting. And so there's this engineering cost involved with that. We're also designing a, a new foundation as well. And then we're also looking to see if the existing foundation at industrial way can accommodate a new flagpole. If the route is to go with a shorter flagpole, then, then essentially, our justification would be, we probably don't even have to run calculations. The justification would be that we are installing a smaller structure on the existing foundation. Therefore, no analysis is required. Now, if you want to install a 50-foot flagpole on that foundation, since you're installing a new flagpole, that foundation might be subject to new loading standards. It's just a technicality in the code. On a, on a practical, on a practical note, it probably wouldn't make a difference, but in the eyes of the code, if you're installing a new structure on a new foundation, you have to run the analysis. So there, there's multiple analysis that is added to trying to move that pole from industrial to median two because of the retrofit, and also analyzing, potentially analyzing the foundation at industrial way. But it sounds like the the owners at that site are likely to install something that is shorter. So our structural engineering design fee could potentially drop there as well, i-if that's the approach they are going to take. So if this was just a new pole that you're going to put into the ground, you know, order and fabricate, it's, it's a very straightforward process. But since there is a retrofit, yeah, that there's more time involved on our end. And like you said, we also have to get a material subconsultant out there to verify the material since there's no as-bills. It's essentially doing our due diligence if we're going to take on the liability.
I have one more question on that. I, I've been by this project several times, but I have not gone out and looked at where the, the footing and the foundation is for the pole that was designed for this original project. Is, is this alternate three, is that a 50-foot pole, or is it the one that was on the original design plan?
Alternate three would be, would be a new original, a new 50-foot pole. In the field, there is no existing footing, even per the old one. A new footing would still be, need to be installed.
Okay, but this alternate three on here is basically building a brand-new pole that looks very similar, nobody would probably even notice that it's different from any other ones. But we don't have to go through all the rigmarole of testing and whether it's been rusted or get, you know, the NASA to come out and take some satellite photos. Is that, is that correct?
That's correct. So basically, we would just be designing the foundation and the anchorage design. And right there, this is the other note I kind of wanted to emphasize, too. We have $6,000 for a structural engineering design fee. There's the $7,000 still in there for the geotechnical investigation. There is a substantial geotechnical report out there right now for that site. They just don't have a specific recommendation for this type of footing. I think if we talk to the geotechnical engineers, they would probably, they would not need to do additional investigation. They could probably give us a recommendation and have it as an addendum or a certified letter on top of the existing geotech report. And I would, and I've done that several times. I would imagine that being a very low fee, anywhere from $1,000 to $2,000, maybe even less than that, just depending, because they have all the bores that they need at the site, so they could probably make a, a, a very well-informed decision on what type of foundation, which I would suspect would be basically just a, a drilled pole footing filled with concrete. So in reality, you know, we're showing $16,000 and some change for that, that fee. It's likely to drop substantially once we get confirmation from the geotech. I just can't make that call right now without getting confirmation from, from them. So that's another thing to take into consideration.
Okay, any more questions before I open it to the public?
No, I know, not this time, you're on, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Linda, do we have any public comment on this item?
No comments.
All right, bringing it back to council for discussion, and I know that, right, this has been going on for a while. I don't know if we can, we can come to a conclusion tonight, but it would be nice. I know, John, you want to, you want to go with alternate two?
Well, I.
It is not recommended.
Yeah, that's what I would like. But I'm looking at, considering the, the fees of this engineering, I'd like to just get all the engineers out of the deal and go put a pole in. I don't want a geotechnical anything. I'd just like to go with alternate three, and I'll make that motion.
Could I, could I make, I'd, I'd like to second it, but I would like to put something into this motion. I know that we're discussing the flagpole on median two. I would like to recover the original flagpole. I don't know where it is right now, but I would like it recovered and brought back to the city. And I'd like to, either tonight or in another agenda item, to set aside some funds so that we.
we could pay tribute to, uh, Chris Klebo, who was a, a important part of our community's history and use something from the original flagpole, uh, for a memorial and monument or something. Is that possible to do?
Certainly. Uh, Madam Mayor, the, uh, the, um, the pole in question is in the city's possession at this point. Uh, we, we do have it, um, and we can certainly bring back at a future agenda, uh, some alternatives and discussions, uh, for the city council to discuss as far as what would be an appropriate tribute, whether the use of the, um, the, the remnants of that original pole would wanna be used or whether you'd wanna go in a different direction.
Okay, thank you. Then I will second, uh, Councilman Sanchez's motion.
Would you repeat the motion?
Uh, it was.
Yeah.
Alternate three.
So that's, to be clear, Madam Mayor, that's to build a new one that's very similar or almost identical to the originals?
Correct.
Okay, and, and dovetailing, and, and dovetailing on what you said about that, maybe we could take like the top 15 feet of that original pole and then put a plaque below it, uh, on.
That's what I'm thinking down the line, to do some type of, uh, plaque to Chris Klebo.
And I'll.
Klebo.
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 Klebo, I say Klebo, you say.
Klebo. You have his elbow in it.
Klebo.
Klebo.
I'd like, I'd like to keep it separated. Just do the pole and we'll, we'll play with the, with the.
Come back, yeah.
The other one later.
Yeah, we'll come back with, yeah, correct.
Just do the three and without.
Then I will, then I will second your motion for alternate three, alternate three.
Okay.
Linda, roll call.
Okay, Councilmember Sanchez.
Aye.
Mayor Ciara.
Aye.
Councilmember Andrusik.
I, this is one heck of a mess and I, I understand what we're trying to do. The, I believe this motion has protected us from the liability of a stratospheric movement that somebody gets hit in the head with a 50 foot pole because it wasn't, it was rusted or it wasn't installed right. So I think we're, we're dealing with a brand new pole here. I'm hoping that staff, uh, legal staff or legal counsel believes that this is the best of the three possibilities before us. It's time to get, get the full, get the flagpole issue addressed to the satisfaction of the council and the community. So I will vote yes.
Okay, and Councilmember King.
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen. This was, uh, it, it was something I don't think anybody wanted to do, but we, we are moving forward. Uh, agenda item number 13, discussion regarding security cameras at city parks. Director Hess.
Will they fall on people?
Sorry, I'm trying to update my screen here and make notes from the first or from the prior item. Okay, oops. Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of city council. Over the past year, vandalism at our various city parks has greatly increased, um, most specifically since the opening of Village Park. That particular location has had many incidents of damage, graffiti, broken irrigation, broken toilets and other restroom facilities, um, damages to playground area. There's just been a lot of, um, incidents throughout the park. Riverview Park, um, has the second most incidents of vandalism, um, which has been occurring every, every few months. Uh, mostly have been within the restroom areas, um, some of the playground equipment in the past and also more recently in the barbecue pits. Oak Park has had a few incidents, but nothing, um, as serious or with major damages as the other two parks. It, it's been somewhat sporadic. Uh, we can't identify exactly what time of the day these incidents occurs. We have been working with the sheriff's department. Every time we've had an incident, um, especially ones that are serious enough where there's damage that needs to be reported, um, as well as the graffiti, so they can document with their, um, gang units. And one of the items they recommend as well is to install security cameras to help identify the vandals, um, particularly at Village Park where there's the most frequent occurrences. Uh, we've been working with Exclusive Alarms, who holds the city's contract, um, and has established security systems at city hall, the library and council chambers. And we've provided a couple of attachments for you. Attachment one, our cost estimates for security systems at each of the park, and this is for purchase option for the security system. Each park would have four cameras, um, but one at Riverview Park, one of the cameras at the Riverview Park location would have a specific high definition pan tilt and zoom, um, to increase the range of visibility because that park is just so long. The purchase option would have a, a three-year warranty and one year for labor. And in addition to the cost proposed, there'd be a recurring monthly cost of $110 for each park for the cellular service so that, uh, we can record, um, any activities that happens. Attachment two is for each park as well, um, an estimate for each park, and that is to have a lease option for the security system. So with the lease option, it's a three-year period, um, and that's maintained, all the parts are maintained by, um, the security company. And if something breaks, it's repaired as part of the contract, um, and it would be replaced, let's say, even if it's at the end of the three-year, with some, with the most current technology, so not what we originally purchased necessarily. At the end of the three-year period, we would have the option to buy out the security system at a cost of $500 per park and we could opt for, to continue the maintenance fee for each location at $50 per month. So I've attached a table to this, um, staff report that outlines each of the park, the purchase price for each park, um, the lease cost for each park, um, the monthly maintenance, um, lease maintenance cost for each park and other general lease info and the cellular cost. So that's there for review and discussion. Um, council can review each park. You have options from not installing any security cameras to installing cameras at certain parks, um, or all the parks, uh, or leasing them, whatever you desire at this point in time. So with that, we have, um, we're available for any questions you may have.
Sorry about that. Thank you very much. Uh, first of all, before we go to public comment, uh, questions. Councilman Andrusik, do you have any questions regarding this?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Councilman Sanchez, any questions?
No.
Councilman King, any questions?
Uh, just one. We're, have you gone and taken a look at this, Scott and Rose? Or, or we're planning on putting this on existing structures that we have there, correct?
Correct.
Yes.
We're reinventing the wheel here.
Me too.
Right? We're just putting it up on poles that we already have.
Yes, yes, they'd be on existing buildings or other features that we have there.
Okay, gotcha, gotcha, gotcha. Okay, that's it.
Okay, I had, I've, I've got a, I've got a few questions. First of all, uh, the damage that's been done to Village Park and to Riverview Park, that damage has been in the thousands of dollars, is that right?
Uh, let me see. I haven't totaled a dollar amount, um, but I would say it's, it's been probably several thousand dollars, at least at Village Park, um, because replacement of the irrigation systems, um, toilets, electrical items, the bike racks, I mean, the actual hard facilities. And the park has only been open for a year.
Sad, huh? Okay. The purchase, if we purchase the, if we lease the cameras, if we have them installed, basically we're paying half the purchase price, um, three years in a row. So it would be less expensive to purchase them. Um, the only thing that the lease gives us is the maintenance portion of the contract, which we don't have if we purchased it, is that correct?
That's correct. Well, the lease, so the lease payment is a one-time cost at the beginning of the project and then we have a $95 plus $110 for the cellular, um, on a monthly basis for three years.
Okay, so the, so the lease is not per year. It's a, I, I see, you're saying it's a one-time lease, got it.
Right, right, right. And then if we do the purchase, uh, there is no maintenance, um, on it. So if something breaks, we've got to call them to repair, um, and replace. And so there's a cost to that, which, you know, it's just going to depend on what the issue is at hand.
Okay, so it, it almost makes sense to do the lease and get the maintenance so that somebody who knows what they're doing, uh, can fix it. Uh, how, how vandalism proof? I know that the lease maintenance does not include, um, if the, if the camera is, say, destroyed by vandalism, correct?
I believe that's correct.
That's.
I don't know how, I mean, the, the equipment is similar to what we have here at the library and city hall. Uh, we haven't had any issues with vandalism to those, um, fixtures.
Okay.
So, but I, you know, I can't say that it's completely vandal-proof.
Right.
We'll have a video of them.
I got it.
The, the cameras are hidden or they're, they're, they're placed within a protective dome, um, which is intended to, to, uh, to somewhat thwart vandals, but, uh, and, and so with any luck, if there were, was any vandalism done, the cost that the city would incur would be the replacement of that dome, uh, as opposed to having to replace the camera.
Got it.
Unless they were very, very, uh, persistent at their attempts to damage.
Well, they've sure been persistent in their attempts to destroy Village Park. Uh, okay, the other question I had is the cellular cost that this is, uh, we're, we're videotaping everything. Uh, this, this isn't just then motion sensitive. It doesn't, the camera doesn't go off when somebody's moving around. This is something that records all the time or, or.
I, I believe the system we have in place right now, um, it, it is motion sensitive, so it's not, it's not recording unless there's motion there that, um, that relieves some of the stress on our, on our storage space because this is all digital. We're not having to have hard drives larger than we would otherwise have to have in order to store it. Um, we, we have actually had, uh, occasion to go back and review, uh, video at our city hall facility where we had an incident take place and, um, um, it, it was very helpful and, and allowed the sheriff's department to come in and get some information they needed to, to help track down the problem that was happening there.
Okay.
And the cellular, Holly, the cellular cost, um, comes into play at the park because the cameras would be wireless, uh, because there is in a way, obviously to connect through the ceiling or roof to a, a server. So that makes the placement a little bit easier for us to look at different areas.
Now, that's good. Um, and I guess the last one is it's motion, it activates by motion. Does somebody, I, I'm, I'm really not up on all this stuff. The, the, the video, the camera starts recording at motion, does it patch in anywhere? Does our local police officer get this and sees if anything is happening while it's happening or is this all after the fact?
It, it would be all after the fact. Um, so if we find that there's been, um, an incident that has occurred, we can go back through the video to find out when it occurred and hopefully capture, um, faces, pictures, vehicles, whatever, um, for the occurrence.
And the cameras themselves will have a deterrent effect, um, or should have a deterrent effect on, on, on the, the rate of vandalism that takes place.
Well, we can't just do nothing. I mean, this is, this is, it's continuing. Uh, any other questions before public comment? Councilman Sanchez?
Yeah, um, I had, I don't know if it's a new idea, but, um, is there, has anybody discussed having something like a freeway camera, you know, that you can get online? Cause, cause we could have a live feed that anybody, any one of us or any one of the public could just log on. Um, we, there used to be a camera at UCSB and, uh, it was just a live cam and, uh, we used to just get on it to see what, if there was, uh, if it was clear at the beach. So what my idea would be is to have a live cam, just like they have on freeways and, uh, excuse me, make it accessible to, to public.
But does that record?
Could. I don't, I don't see why not.
Okay. Uh, Councilman King, you had a question?
I don't have a question, but I, if you wanna go to the public first, I, I can clarify some things for you that you had some questions about.
I, I appreciate that. I'm, I'm, yeah, I'm waiting for everything to get really good out there before I make my investment. Uh, Linda, do we have any public comment?
No comments.
All righty, bringing it back, Councilman King, clarifications please?
Well, I, I have, I have a camera out in front of my house and what the, the, I, I'm certain this is basically the same kind of a system. What it does is it's, it's basically active all the time, but it's not recording. So if you get something, uh, if I get my cat walks through my yard, a car drives up the street, what this will do is it will back up a few seconds and then record that entire motion until it has gone through the field of your, of your screen and you're recording. And then you can also set it up to where it actually does give you alerts. So if you say had video camera, uh, if you had this tie-in to the sheriff's department and they had monitors, it can give them alerts. So like if you say, one o'clock in the morning, you get a recording, well, why is there something moving around in one of our parks at one o'clock in the morning? So they could, and then, and then the, and you know, then somebody comes to you and says, hey, there's some new graffiti on the wall in the bathroom. So that's where they could go back and, and start reviewing that. If you have constant recording, then you would have to go through thousands of hours to try to find the particular location where somebody's walking through that screen or it's, it's really convenient. I get little blocks on my phone, I can do it on my tablet at home or my, uh, computer and e- each one of the blocks represents, um, a, 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 a motion that was recorded at that particular time. But it doesn't record 24/7, it only records when something's going through that field of view. So I think that's a really good idea for us to do that. Um, as far as the live feed goes, I think that that's probably gonna have to be a separate feed. If you have just a live feed rather than tied into that system that, that we would try to initiate as a recording for surveillance and what John's talking about would probably have to be a completely different system where people could just go on and it would be constantly a live feed. I could be wrong on that, um, uh, but I think that's, that's apples and oranges. But we could have Scott and Rose look into that.
Thank you. Well, I, I do agree that we need to do something, cause the vandalism has, uh, it, it doesn't seem to be going away. I don't know if it's transients or kids who are bored, but, uh, you know, that I, I, it's unreasonable to expect our residents, uh, it'd be scary if they walked into something like this that was going on, um, and we need to secure our city property. So I don't know. Gentlemen, do you, do you like the idea of the purchase or the lease or do you wanna go with all three parks? Do you wanna start with two parks? What do you wanna do?
I had another question.
Sure.
So the, the cell, the cellular cost, is that, uh, that's, um, something that we could feed into or, or is that to broadcast? Is it the cellular, is that just Bluetooth or is that like another?
another, like a cellphone, something that is connected?
That connects the camera to the server where it's going to record the items, the videos.
It's not like a cellphone, like a...
Not actually a phone.
Right.
But it, it, it is a cellular account like a phone would have, and, and it would...
Right, so a hotspot, basically.
Yes, it was, it's the connection that a hotspot would use, yes. It would be cellular, though it would not be Wi-Fi.
Okay, that's, that's what I was wondering, if it's going to be Wi-Fi type of thing. Thank you.
Okay, so what is your pleasure, gentlemen?
I personally think we ought to buy it. Let's own it.
Okay, is that a motion?
Yes, I'm making a motion that we buy the system that has been presented to us by staff as written.
Is that for all three parks?
That is correct.
Okay. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All righty. Linda, roll call, please.
Okay, Councilmember King.
Aye.
Councilmember Sanchez.
Aye.
Councilmember Andrusik.
Aye.
And Mayor Ciara.
With the understanding, we can change it. We're not, we're not buying something that we can't change. If we, if we find something better, we'll own this one. We can move it somewhere else and put the newer one in. Technology's always, we probably have drones. We can rent drones pretty soon, and they'll be, they'll be surveying it, what Officer Gudlow used to do.
That's funny. All righty. That was an aye.
Aye.
And Mayor Ciara.
Aye. Thank you very much. All righty. City manager's report. Mr. Wolf?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just two items. Just a reminder to the city council and to the public. We have one more city council meeting scheduled for this year, 2020. As the council is aware, we typically do not hold meetings during Thanksgiving week because, well, the meeting would be on Thanksgiving. And then we also do not hold a meeting typically on the fourth Thursday of December because that falls between Christmas and New Year's and would be inconvenient for most. Therefore, the next meeting we have will be on December 10th, and we will, we will see you there. The other item I have this evening is to just repeat what the mayor had brought up earlier. November 20th at Riverview Park, it's actually going to be situated on the piece of property immediately adjacent to Riverview Park, but will be accessed through Riverview Park. The Central Coast Film Society and the city of Buellton will be putting on a drive-in movie event. The movie that will be shown that evening will be The Croods, the original version, as there will be a sequel coming out very soon here. The price for admission to that will be $20 per vehicle. Only persons in vehicles will be admitted. There will be no walk-ins to this. There are very strict requirements from public health to ensure social distancing, and people must remain in their vehicles. There's a whole, whole list of requirements. But it should be a fun evening. We already have enough sponsors to, to cover the cost of the event, so that is good news. Tickets can be purchased by visiting the Central Coast Film Society's website at centralcoastfilmsociety.org, and you can follow the directions there and purchase your tickets. I would recommend anyone interested does so very soon. Only 200 vehicles will be allowed to enter, and they are selling out quickly. And with that, I will conclude the city manager's report.
Good. We also need to remind people that the Buellton Holiday Bazaar is this Saturday at Riverview Park. So it's been, was rescheduled due to rain last weekend. Anyway, thank you all for being here. We wish Councilman or Vice Mayor Mercado speedy recovery, and our next regular meeting of city council will be Thursday, December 10th at 6:00 p.m. Meeting adjourned.
Thank you.
Okay, good night, everyone.